Good evening and welcome to the Eden Prairie Planning Commission on Monday, September 14th. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So tonight, our first order on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Any comments, questions, or changes? If not, do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Higgins. Second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Toomey. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. So now we need to look at the minutes from the meeting, the Planning Commission meeting held Monday, August 10th, 2020. Are there any changes or additions to the minutes? Again, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair, to approve.
Commissioner Gooding makes a motion. Second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Marcus makes a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. So I believe we have no public hearing scheduled for tonight, so we just have a planner's report to review some of the efforts going on in code amendments. Julie?
That's correct, Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission. So this evening, I'd like to do an overview with the commission of some of the code amendments that staff is working on. Some of these amendments are slated for review at your next meeting, and I'll try and remember and bring that up as we're talking about those. As you can imagine, with the recent review and adoption of ASPIRE, staff's efforts were concentrated on that effort for, you know, a two to three-year period. So during that time, of course, there are code amendments that are identified that need to be addressed, but they kind of take a backseat to the bigger effort of the comprehensive planning process. And then, of course, with the adoption of ASPIRE, there are new implementation strategies that come out of ASPIRE requiring some revisions to the code as well. So in the presentation that I have to share with you this evening, there's three categories. We're going to talk about new zoning districts that staff is working on drafting as a result of the adoption of ASPIRE. Then we're going to move into more performance standards that are amendments that through experience either with staff utilizing their current requirements or changes in industry standards, those types of things that have necessitated staff to take a second look at those. And then, last but not least, are kind of more housekeeping matters, things that just can provide a little more clarification, communicate expectations to developers in the community earlier in the process. So those are kind of the three main categories that we're going to be looking at tonight. So as I mentioned, the first that we'll be talking about is new zoning districts, and this is an exercise that the commission went through not all that long ago when the park and open space zoning district was drafted. So there was a whole new zoning district established, and as a part of creating a new zoning district, we're not only creating what the purpose of the zoning district is, but also talking about identifying what are the permitted uses in each of those zoning districts, what are the standards such as building height or setbacks or things of that nature. So the first one that we want to talk about this evening is the Flex Service Zoning District. That's a land use category that is new to the ASPIRE comprehensive plan, and there are two areas in the city that are guided for Flex Service. I'm going to try and use my mouse here. So this is, so that's kind of to orient yourself, this dark purple is the former Flying Cloud landfill. So this is Pioneer Trail, right here, and then this is Old Pioneer Trail. So there's a Super America that sits down here, there's the Caliber Auto Body that just opened. These parcels right in this area are guided for Flex Service. And then in the other graphic, this is Martin Drive, just north of Highway 5, Mitchell, over here. So as you can see, this dark purple is kind of the center of that Martin Drive area. So an older industrial area where the buildings, you know, may have kind of lived the majority of their life in purposefulness, and we're looking at trying to figure out how to repurpose those areas. And one of the main objectives of the Flex Service Zoning District, if you'll recall from ASPIRE, is to identify properties in a changed marketplace and incentivize locations of certain uses that aren't really ideally suited for the TOD, the Town Center, the Golden Triangle. So things such as automotive repair. Those are not preferred uses in a TOD or a Town Center area, but as a community, there's a need for those uses. So where can we find a place to locate them in the community? And we are at a staff level currently in the drafting stage of this particular zoning district, and once we continue to work through that, the next step will be to move to stakeholder outreach. There'll be outreach to property owners. We're doing inventory of the properties right now, drafting the language, and there will be that outreach prior to moving forward to Planning Commission and City Council. So that's our first one. And I'm open to questions if you guys have questions along the way, or we can wait until the end if you kind of want to get the full effect and then jump in. I'm...
I'd like to jump in here and just encourage questions as we're going through. I mean, some of us have been through this game before, some of us haven't, so this is a great opportunity to ask some questions and get some clarifications on how this process goes and specifics on the different topics.
And city staff is not looking for any formal action tonight. This is really to provide information back to the commission, take any input you guys might have to offer staff as we're continuing to work on these efforts early in the process, and also just to kind of give you a heads up, if you will, that these are coming your way. So...
When these come up after a tough public hearing, it's maybe a little harder to get the enthusiasm going, so this is a nice time to be able to ask questions and think about it.
Very good. Julie, I do have a comment. Then if we're commenting on each section just with regards to, you know, I like the idea, we kind of talked about it with ASPIRE, that you guys are going to add this Flex Service Zoning District. You know, I think you might see it as kind of a light industrial quasi, it's retail, but maybe not your destination or maybe not your, you know, mall-type retail, but more of, you know, destination uses like, you know, gymnasiums, your taekwondo, your gymnastics. And that Martin Drive area, I think, is a good example because there's... And just as we're, you know, defining it and kind of in the code listing the uses, I, you know, I think we should just make sure that we're allowing kind of everything we intend to under that. And so I'm just rattling off. The showroom slash warehouse-type uses, I think even in that area, there's like a lighting store and which consists of a showroom, but then also some back warehouse space for their product. You know, auto repairs, and I would think auto sales should be something to consider in that zoning. I think we should spell out breweries in that zoning definition as an allowed use, because, you know, that's kind of breweries love to kind of go into industrial areas sometimes. So I think that would be nice to allow them. And that's kind of all that came to mind.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, as we move forward in the presentation, there is also a code amendment that talks about gymnasiums, and we'll talk about that a little bit more when we get to that slide and how that fits in specifically to this zoning district. So that's kind of a piece of it as well. With regard to the auto sales, I do want to comment on that because there is something that's probably a little unique to Eden Prairie that we don't see in a lot of other communities. Auto sales in Eden Prairie, with the exception of those auto dealerships that you see around the 494 Ring, all outdoor storage is required to be basically inside. So when we get a used car dealer coming to the counter, asking staff to sign off on the documentation that they need for a motor vehicle dealer's license, we have to work with them and educate them that there is very little parking that is allowed outside. All of the inventory has to be parked inside the structure. So that's something that is a detail that usually doesn't find its way up to this Planning Commission, so just a little piece I want to be able to share with you for you to be aware of. The next zoning district that staff is working on creating out of the ASPIRE 2040 is the Mixed Use Zoning District. So again, down in that Martin Drive area, we've got this kind of dark brown area on either end of Martin Drive that's guided for mixed use. So this property is a MinDOT-owned parcel that they will be looking to dispose of. This is the bakery parcel. As you'll recall, we talked about that quite a bit through the ASPIRE process. And then in this other graphic, this is the Eden Prairie Center area, and this is the Castle Ridge and Fountain Place area. So those are the two areas in the city that are currently guided for mixed use. And when we talk about mixed use, we mean vertical and horizontally mixed use. So take, for instance, the recent Castle Ridge development projects that have come through. That's an example of horizontal mixed uses. So we'd be looking at opportunities to promote that type of development in these areas. As many of you, I'm sure, see in our community and in others, there's infill development that's happening in parking lot areas. So we're taking a look at how do we bring that into a reality here at Eden Prairie Center, knowing that that is inevitably, you know, going to be something that's presented to us. So again, we're currently in the drafting stage, and we'll proceed to stakeholder outreach, most likely including the chamber as well as affected property owners, and doing that outreach before coming back to Planning Commission and City Council. Quite frankly, one of the struggles that we're having, and by struggles, I kind of nerd out on this kind of stuff during the workday. You know, it's really fun to talk about all the different approaches we can take, but the two areas you're looking at have very different characteristics. So trying to write a zoning district regulations that can accommodate the environment in which both of these parcels and properties, I should say, are located is a bit challenging, and understanding how to make the most out of both of them. So for instance, one of the conversations last Friday when staff was talking about the mixed use, particularly around Eden Prairie Mall, is how to address transparency. In our TOD and Town Center zoning districts, we encourage and require transparency along that pedestrian-human scale, and we're having the conversation about, does that make sense here? Because even though it's mixed use, it's still going to be very heavily auto-oriented rather than maybe pedestrian-oriented like you're going to see in the TOD and Town Center areas. So, you know, trying to work through those issues. So, you know, as the commission is, you know, maybe thinking that through or seeing good examples in other communities or in your travels, which unfortunately are probably a bit on hold right now, but if you see other examples, have ideas, please feel free to share them with us either this evening or over the next, you know, coming weeks as we're continuing to work on this.
I do have a couple of comments. I might on all of these, we'll see. I think that the horizontal versus vertical is important because that can be an issue, especially in the suburbs. You can't always actually make it vertical. I think that, again, not having seen what kind of language or anything you guys have come up with, you know, I don't know if it's going to be like required that a single development have multiple uses, especially if the parcel's small. So maybe there's a certain parcel size at which you must have multiple or you don't have to below that size because it just is impractical. It might be a small, single-building-type development, but you take into consideration the surrounding uses as a mixed-use neighborhood. And then as it relates to transparency, you know, I think if you go there with that, maybe limiting it to the number of facades, like no more than two facades of the building have to meet that requirement if there is one. I recall working on a building in Minneapolis, and I still can't get over it, but they required 30% transparency on any side of the building that faces the street and any side of the building that faces the parking lot. And, you know, we had a building at the corner, street, street, and parking wrapped around, and it's really hard to make a four-sided glass building because where do you put the back of house? So, you know, considering that in the transparency, because it is, there are some areas, especially over by the Martin Drive area, where it doesn't seem to make as much sense. And then I think that somewhere in there, we might want to consider talking about drive-throughs. Do we want to, what do we want to say about drive-throughs? And I guess I don't really have my thoughts collected on that, but it's something to think about what we say about them.
It's almost as if Commissioner Mehdi was at our staff meeting last Friday, because those were all of the things that we were talking about, how to address drive-throughs, how to integrate the mixed use, because as exactly what she was talking about, some of those properties are small enough that there's just, it's not feasible from a marketplace standard. So of course, you don't want your zoning ordinance to require something that the market can't support. So currently, in its draft form, there is a provision that properties under a certain size or buildings under a certain size do not have to have multiple uses in them in order to address that. And the drive-throughs is something that we're continuing to work through because drive-throughs in Eden Prairie's current zoning ordinance are not something that's specifically addressed. We work through those as development proposals come forward. There aren't specific criteria that need to be met, but as we're getting into some of these transition areas, it feels as if we're probably going to need to head in the direction of having some specific regulations to address expectations with the number of drive-throughs, or if there is a drive-through, then does it have to be a multi-tenant building? How does that work with what types of uses generally move in the direction of a drive-through? So we're having all of those discussions. But again, any input that you have tonight or in coming weeks is very welcomed.
And as Minneapolis found out, there's a lot of opinions out there.
And then last but not least for new zoning districts is the Eco Innovation Zoning District. So this is the guiding that was assigned to the former Flying Cloud landfill. It's the very dark purple area that's sizable right in the middle of the graphic. And the intent is to provide opportunities for sustainable and innovative reuse of that site. It's a lot of area. So what can we do as a community to promote some sustainability? You know, I think one of the initial thoughts that's gaining a bit of traction is, is this a good location for a solar farm? And the MPCA is responsible for the ongoing maintenance and operation of the landfill, so there would have to, of course, be some coordination with the MPCA. There's also some interesting history as to how the landfill was financed with bonds and things that impact what the property can be used for and how. So that's another aspect that we're taking a look at. But with the Eco Innovation Zoning District, that's kind of the first step, is to get those regulations on the books and have that in place so that city, MPCA, whoever the appropriate players are, can reach out to some of those providers, and they would know what to expect through the creation of that zoning district. So again, we're working on that at a drafting stage at staff level. We've done some outreach to the MPCA, to the Met Council in their Soul Smart program because they've got experience with other locations. We've also reached out to some other cities who have done land, or excuse me, solar equipment on their landfills and how that has worked. So we're in an information gathering stage, and we're working through that. We expect, you know, that it will move forward to Planning Commission and City Council review probably sometime later this year as we head into the winter months.
And as I remember from the hearings and all that we had when we redid, when we minimized the space and redid the landfill, there are some pretty significant physical limitations on that. It's a big piece of land, but there's a lot of things that you can't do on that. In fact, I think more things you can't do than you can do on that land.
There are a lot of considerations that need to be taken into account in addition to proximity to Flying Cloud Airport, so Mac is going to need to have a voice in this process as well. And, you know, through ASPIRE, we had some outreach to the MPCA about creating a final land use plan for the landfill site, and at one point, there was some consideration of, is that the right time to do it with ASPIRE? You know, finalize that land use plan, or does it make more sense as we move into something more specific to this property? So needless to say, the final land use plan for the MPCA, with the MPCA, will likely move forward at the same time as the Eco Innovation Zoning District because, as we were looking at it through that comp planning process, that seemed to be the better approach rather than when we were tackling the community-wide issues. We wanted to stay focused on the needs of this particular property through this effort.
Mr. Chair, I have a question. I know that the city developed some of the property that is over there that the city owns, it's separate, I think, from what you're talking about with the former land use. I mean, the former...
Landfill?
Landfill, thank you. But I know that it's just beginning to become available to the community to use it. It's, I don't remember it being very big, and it's right off Flying Cloud Drive there. Is that anything that would be affected by this other zoning that you're looking at?
So, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, the property that Commissioner Higgins is talking about is the Moss Site off of Flying Cloud Drive, and they're in the process of moving toward a yard waste facility on that site. So that is not something that would be impacted by this Eco Innovation District. This Eco Innovation District is not intended at this point to be applied to the city-owned property, only to the landfill site. Now, once the zoning district is in place, you know, down the road, if there are other properties that maybe make sense for that, or developers want to come in and seek that zoning and guiding on another property, certainly that could be considered at that time. It's not intended to necessarily be limited just to this site, so we are keeping that in mind as we're drafting the regulations about, you know, these performance standards might make a lot of sense at the landfill, but will they also make sense in other parts of the community if there are uses that evolve over time that make sense there as well? Seeing no other hands, moving on to some of the performance standard updates that staff is looking at. The Wireless Telecommunications Code Amendment will be coming to you at your next meeting in two weeks, and largely this is essentially the FCC updated their Sprint Spectrum Act, and that impacts telecommunications provisions here in Eden Prairie and everywhere. It's not unique to us. So by and large, you know, this code amendment could have fallen under the Performance Standards or the Housekeeping Section because it is an amendment that staff is working with the city attorney on to bring our code into conformance with what these FCC rulings are, just so that there is consistency between federal regulations and what the city is doing. These, as we'll talk about in two weeks when we bring the specific amendment back to you, there are some things that the FCC says the city has to approve, and it's their rule, but it goes through us, so we have to approve it. And we want to make sure that that is communicated in city code as to what the process is and why that, why those rulings are in place. So we're working to provide a streamlined review process. Those applications are reviewed at an administrative level. At the only time that telecommunications really comes before the Planning Commission and City Council is if there's a new pole over a certain height that is being constructed. So those are, tend to be few and far between because this telecommunications amendment really addresses those small cell technologies that we're seeing more and more of on existing light poles or other utility structures. So any questions on that one? Lighting is another code amendment that we'll be bringing forward to you in two weeks. Again, this could have fallen under Performance Standards or Housekeeping. Right now, our lighting requirements in city code are fairly brief, and we work with the developers more through a policy perspective and through our development agreement standards. So what we want to achieve with this code amendment is to bring the practices that we're already doing through those policies and development agreement requirements and putting them in code to make sure that everybody, all property owners, are required to meet those same standards. So we're going to be addressing things like downcast, cut-off lighting fixtures, minimizing spill onto adjacent properties, pole height, those types of things. As, again, it's all the things we're doing every day right now, just putting it in code so it's clear. The one piece that we are not addressing with this that I, at a staff level, we think might come up through the conversation, is LED lighting. Because right now, we do have a standard for a metric of half a foot candle at the property line is the amount of light that is allowed by code. LED lighting gives off a different glow, if you will, than incandescent. So we've done a little research on that. We'll talk about it a little bit more in two weeks, but if the Planning Commission and City Council, you know, discussion, excuse me, head in that direction, that's something further we could look at that goes kind of above and beyond putting into code what we already do as practice.
So just to clarify that for me, so the code proposal that we'll likely see initially will not address a requirement for LED lighting?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, that's correct. It would not address a requirement for LED light, nor would it address the brightness that comes with LED. Because as I said, the kind of the lighting glow is different with an LED, so while it may, while it meets the half a foot candle requirement that we have, it does look different and can have a different impact when you've got, say, a commercial use across the street from a residential use. And so if that conversation through the process kind of heads that way, staff does have information we can share, and, you know, we're certainly open to the idea if there's further amendments or discussion that the Planning Commission and Council want to have on that topic. But this proposal, in its current form, moving forward to you in two weeks, does not address LED lighting.
So from an energy, it's, what you're proposing is kind of neutral relative to an energy conservation perspective that LED lighting may offer?
I would say that's a fair statement, sir.
Okay.
Any questions on lighting? Parking is a whole menu options full of items that we're taking a look at. So probably the most straightforward is the first item, looking at stall and drive aisle dimensions. Right now, we have a requirement in code for 25-foot drive aisles, and we have, when it's a 90-degree parking stall, a 9-by-19 stall requirement. Over the course of the last, I'm going to say, five to 10 years, there have been multiple requests for, through the PUD process, for 24-foot drive aisles and 9-by-18-foot parking stalls. Those, in my experience, have all been approved. They've proved functional, so staff will be proposing that slight change to the dimensions for those particular items. Then moving into the multifamily parking requirements, right now, our multifamily parking requirements are uniform across the board. We require two parking stalls for every unit. So whether that's a three-bedroom unit, whether it is a memory care unit, whether it's a studio unit, the parking requirements are the same. And through some of the multifamily projects that we've seen come through the process over the last couple of years, we know that the parking functions much differently based on the type of multifamily unit it is. So staff will be proposing, addressing different parking requirements for a studio unit or... staff will be proposing addressing different parking requirements for a studio unit or a senior assisted living or a memory care type of facility to kind of right-size that parking to the development that's being proposed. We're also talking at a staff level about the potential for incentives related to parking for affordable housing. So our thoughts along that road are, right now, code requires, as I said, two parking stalls for every unit, and one of those has to be enclosed. So we're at least discussing at a staff level, does it make sense to reduce that structured parking requirement for affordable projects in order to bring down the cost of the project, thereby intending to reduce the amount of rent that would need to be charged to the tenants? So that's something we're working through, thinking about. It may or what that exactly looks like when it finds its way back to you, I don't want to say at this point because we're still working through it. But that is something that we do have an eye toward, and we want to try and incentivize some of these other goals and visions from Aspire through these code amendments when possible. Another area that we're taking a look at with parking is shopping centers. So looking to, again, right-size parking based on the size of a shopping center or retail center. Eden Prairie Center has vast amounts of parking. There's efficiencies of scale there that can be utilized much differently than a two-tenant retail strip center. So again, we're working to try and identify what's the right amount of parking where you can kind of take advantage of multiple tenants utilizing the same area. Where it gets tends to get a little dicey, and where staff has had some experience in the past, is when a multi-tenant building tends to have more than 50% restaurant uses, then parking kind of becomes challenging during those peak times, especially if all the restaurants are, say, lunch providers or dinner providers versus being a mix. So we're working to try and build in some of those incentives as well that take a look at allowing opportunities for that parking to be reviewed at an administrative level as tenants change and evolve over time. We've proactively tried to address that in some of our development agreements more recently, but that does add an additional process for folks when they're looking to repurpose a space. They've got one tenant moving out, a restaurant wants to move in. What can we're looking to try and streamline that process at at an administrative level rather than coming back through the Planning Commission and Council. The other piece of it that makes it challenging is that retail space is parked based on square footage of a building, but restaurant uses are parked based on the number of seats that they have. So as one restaurant moves out and another restaurant moves in, they could have vastly different parking requirements, but still occupy the same space depending on how they utilize that space. So we're trying to make the playing field a little more level so that we can understand how much parking the site can actually accommodate regardless of the tenants. So that's kind of a bigger nut to crack, but we're we're working on trying to figure out how to best do that as well. And then Restaurant Patios is the last piece of the parking that I'd like to talk about tonight. So right now, city code requires, as I said, parking based on the number of seats for a restaurant. Those outdoor spaces have the same requirement. And as you well know, in Minnesota, folks aren't sitting out there in January. So we're, again, trying to right-size that and figure out what percentage of those seats actually should require additional parking because they're additional new new customers, or are they just customers that would have sat inside but are now sitting outside because it's nice and they can? You know, I think one of the big takeaways that we really want to share with the Commission and the Sustainability Commission is through these parking requirements, we want to make sure that parking is provided as appropriate on-site, but we don't want to be requiring bituminous or concrete to be laid on a site that isn't necessary so that we can maintain natural areas and not have the stormwater impacts and things of that that sort in order to promote sustainability on the site.
I have a couple of comments on this subject. With regards to the stall dimensions, and maybe this is already in there, but it suggests we also have a definition for compact stalls and allowing a certain number of compact stalls or percentage of stalls being compact. I think that's a good thing, and and again, helps the developer if they're trying to squeeze in an extra stall. They can kind of swap out three regular stalls, maybe have four compact stalls and have them signed appropriately. Also, as it relates to the parking requirements for multifamily, is possibly the idea of allowances or relief from it if they're within a certain distance from a transit stop or, you know, have to define what kind of large bus stop versus the smaller side stops. But some sort of transit-oriented parking relief if they're next to transit. And also with really as it relates to the enclosed stalls, right now, if half the stalls need to be enclosed, but now you're switching the requirement from two stalls a unit to something else, that 50% also kind of like totally changes as well. So and I'm not a huge fan of the 50%. I just know that is a challenge architecturally with with newer construction apartment buildings to get, you know, 50% underground because you're right on the verge of having to build a whole nother layer of parking, which usually kind of kills kills the deal. And/or, I guess, you know, I've seen there's developments in Eden Prairie that have those outdoor kind of garage stalls, and I don't think those ever really look all that nice, but I think that's why they were built that way. But just revisiting the that after the requirement changes based on the number of units, instead of it being 50% of all the stalls required, maybe it's like 50% of the number of units. So at least one underground stall per unit instead of half of the required stalls underground. And it's a slight difference, but I think it should be considered. And then I agreed with all of your comments on restaurant parking requirements. I think that is always a huge struggle. I mean, it is a burden to to develop it when there's a large parking requirement. You know, nobody really likes all the extra stalls, but how do you make sure you have enough? But I don't have any specific comment or recommendations on that.
I'll just add my two cents worth on this. I think this is going to be the toughest challenge for us. And and I think it's a balancing challenge. I don't disagree with most, if not all, of Commissioner Mehdi's comments. The idea of, I don't know, one of our former commission members used to say vast seas of asphalt in Eden Prairie. You know, we don't want that. We only want what we really need to have. And yet, what we need to have sometimes is hard to judge. And and one, putting more research into it and some more standards down that we believe are are fair and equitable is a good thing. So I strongly support what we're doing here. But to me, if I look back on decisions that we've made, one of the decisions that I actually voted against, one of the few things I voted against that got passed was the Martin Blue. And one of the reasons was I didn't believe we had enough parking there. And yet, in the end, it seems that we have, and it seems to to have been fine. So that was a place where our ordinances pushed us too far, and we brought it back. I didn't agree with it at the time, but in hindsight, that was a good call. The other one was when Four and Five was taken over. And and I think I think we actually made a bad call on that one because I quit going to that restaurant in the evening most of the time, even though I think it's one of the nicer places for casual dining in Eden Prairie, just because parking is always a mess. And then there's the argument of, well, it doesn't really spill out on the city streets. So if the if the owner wants to have tight parking, then why should we get in their way? And, you know, that actually had some logic to it. So I don't know, just again, more topics that I think we have to consider, issues we have to consider in this one. It's a tough one. Mr. Goody?
I would urge you not to get too carried away with parking places in the winter because they become snow storage. So even though they don't park cars in them, you know, Four and Five, when you go there in the winter, you've lost 10 or 12 spots because they push snow in them. And that that occurs in a lot of those small, small areas. So you they are used, just not for their intended purpose.
And and just as an aside, Chair, members of the Commission, that is something we've started to address in the last number of years in development agreements. So as part of development agreements, we usually will include language that says snow storage cannot occur in any stormwater areas. Any required parking stalls, so for instance, if a site's required 55 parking stalls, 55 parking stalls need to remain clear of snow storage. Some sites, because of business need, do install more more parking stalls. So anything over the code requirement, you know, in that scenario could be used. But I agree, that is something that does come up, and and we're trying to proactively address it as well. But good food for thought for the amendment.
I just have a comment, too. Is there a possibility of looking at incentivizing various types of hardscape to reduce the runoff impact that bituminous often has? That sometimes can actually look quite nice, you know, if it's brick or whatever, you know, people can bring in. But incentivizing that to help when they do have large requirements in a restaurant situation or something, so that they can have that flexibility to have something that's more attractive, better for the environment in many ways, but also meets their needs when they need it.
And Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, that is something with the adoption of the city's design guidelines, two and a half, three years ago, that was included in the design guideline. So that's something that the council and commission can consider as a part of PUD waivers. So if somebody's coming in and wanting more density or different building material standards, if they're offering different types of hardscape, that's a identified item on that list of options that can be considered as a part of those waivers. Group usable open space is defined as land area and facilities designated and developed for recreational or social activities. That requirement has been in place since the zoning ordinance was adopted in 1969, and it applies to multifamily buildings. So in one of our, we've got two multifamily zoning districts. One requires 1,000 square feet of group usable open space per unit. The other requires 600 square feet of group usable open space per unit. Some of the more recent developments that we've done, some of the senior projects, we're looking at not only the outdoor areas where there might be a gazebo or passive or active recreational areas, but also looking at internal spaces such as movie theaters or game rooms, things of that sort, to count toward that group usable open space. However, our development characteristics in 2020 are much different than in 1969. We're not seeing the same amount of site area being available to accommodate that type of group usable open space areas. So as industry standards have changed for multifamily, as our community goals and policies have changed with regard to density, you know, this is something that just is in need of an update. So staff is continuing to research what other communities, both in our vicinity in the metro area and throughout the country, are doing. And we're looking to update those standards to more closely reflect the standards of development today. As you likely recall, every multifamily project that has come through in the time that seven years that I've been with the city, everyone, I believe, has requested a waiver to the group usable open space. That's usually an indicator that your requirements are out of adjust needs some adjusting to reflect current conditions. So that's another one that we're taking a look at. Kind of part and parcel with that is the gross site area per dwelling unit. Again, this requirement's been in place since 1969, and it applies to the multifamily zoning districts. It essentially requires an increase in site area with an increase in density. And that may have been the goal in the 70s. It's not necessarily the goal any longer in Eden Prairie, as we're seeing more dense type of development in our TOD areas and town center areas. And again, most of our development has been on infill sites where those sites are left over for a reason. They're challenging. They've got either steep topography or they've got wetlands, or there's a lot of trees, and we're looking to save some of those trees. So trying to provide a balance between what the site can accommodate and what current development standards are. The gross site area also, you know, as I said, goes hand in hand with the density. If you're increasing the density and the number of units to increase the site area, you they go together. So if we allow the increased density, this seems to be kind of a second ask, if you will, because you're already achieving the density that we're looking for through the comprehensive plan. So again, this is one where multifamily projects have routinely requested a waiver because it is just in need of some updating.
I have a comment on this one. My my suggestion would be to remove it entirely because the density requirement, so let's say there's a density in a certain zoning of limit of 15 units per acre, so units per site area, in that case acre, that's just the inverse of the site area per unit, gross site area per dwelling unit. So they're, to me, they're exactly one and the same. I'm not really seeing any distinction as to why we would have this on top of the density.
Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, I I agree with Commissioner Mehdi. This is the conversation we're having at a staff level. Because it seems like if you're achieving the density, there's no need to ask for this as well. But of course, because it is in there, and it is part of the fabric of our community, we want to make sure before we make a significant change that we've thought around all sides of it and make sure we're not getting rid of something, you know, that really embodies what the goals and policies of the city are. But it is entirely possible that when the amendment comes forward to you, that the gross site area per dwelling unit will be proposed to be struck through. But we want to make sure we do all the research necessary to confirm that's the direction that staff recommends.
Thanks.
And then moving into some of the more housekeeping items. Now, the housekeeping items, as I said earlier, tend to be more clarification and kind of one-offs, if you will. So they don't require the in-depth detail analysis that some of these others do. So to bring them forward, they kind of might be a tag along on some of the other ordinance amendments in order to just to keep them moving forward and get the work done. One of the bigger code amendment or housekeeping amendments is the sign code. Again, sign code adopted in 1966. It has a lot of purposes in each community. In Eden Prairie's history, the most notable requirement has been to maintain an attractive and aesthetically pleasing level of signage within the community. So that through that process, staff has identified a number of provisions that if we amend them, would make the code cleaner and easier to administer without diminishing that integrity of the code. So that's the housekeeping part of it. The secondary part of it that gets a little more complicated is the Supreme Court ruling that basically says communities can't regulate signs based on content. You can regulate signs based on height, size, location, but not content. So what that really means is, right now, in our code, the city's ordinance identifies certain types of signs. Now, maybe it's a building identification sign or a for lease sign or a project area sign. You can't tell if it's a project area sign unless you read what the sign says. So you need to read the content to understand which regulations to apply to it. Supreme Court is saying you can't do that. You have to just regulate based on size, location, height, zoning district, things of that, but not based on the content of what's in the sign. So there are some kind of more sweeping changes we would need to make to the sign ordinance to still allow the types of signs that are important to our community, such as a building identification sign or a neighborhood identification sign, but figuring out how to do that without regulating it through content-based review. So that's a kind of a bigger piece of it. But we're continuing to work on that. This, of course, Supreme Court ruling affects a lot of communities. We haven't seen a lot of ordinances changed as of yet, so there's We haven't seen a lot of ordinances changed as of yet, so there's not a lot out there to kind of learn from. But we're going to continue to research that and take a look at our code and identify those areas where we might need to make some of those changes.
Just one comment. To the extent, I guess, that it's permissible to do so, I think that it would be helpful to have a, have a provision that the sign must be in, be well-kept or in good, kept in good condition. I know there's some signs that I've seen, some flag signs that's just are completely torn up, and they're just sitting out there, and they look, they look kind of awful. Some are get like so faded over time you can't even read them. So having a sign be like well-kept, good condition, readable, or something like that, again, if that's allowed to include, I think, would be helpful in some enforcement situations.
The next code amendment that we're going to talk about this evening is the gymnasium use, and this is one that's scheduled for your review in two weeks. So right now, the code allows gymnasiums as a permitted use in the industrial districts up to 100% of the building's square footage. Now, where it gets a little complicated to administer this is there's no definition of what a gymnasium is. So over the course of time, you can imagine there's been a wide variety of uses that have been categorized as gymnasium, and from the city's staff's, not a S's there, city staff's perspective, one of the most challenging are those taekwondo, dance studios, those types of things that Commissioner Mehdi alluded to earlier. In some parts of the industrial district, historically, those have been allowed as gymnasiums, meaning they could inhabit 100% of the area of a building. However, that same use in a commercial district is not a gymnasium use. It's classified as a commercial or retail use. So to say that the same use is, in one instance, a retail operation, and in the other instance, a gymnasium operation, depending on the address, is problematic. It's not equitable across the code. One of the other issues we'd like to address from a staff perspective on the gymnasium use is most of our industrial properties are in the Golden Triangle, which is our, our employment center. So you can imagine if you've got a very large building and 100% of that floor area is permitted to be used as a gymnasium, that depletes a certain amount of employment opportunity. So staff is looking to provide a definition for gymnasiums so that it can be interpreted and applied consistently across zoning districts and remove that ambiguity, but also to provide for gymnasium uses in industrial districts, but at a reduced level rather than 100% in order to maintain those employment opportunities. Now, kind of circling back to that flex service area, and remember that that area was at Long Martin Drive or down at the Pioneer and Pioneer areas, one of the things that staff is considering is maybe in those areas, gymnasium's at 100%. In the flex service district would make sense, but keeping it at some other percentage in the industrial districts up in the Golden Triangle would make sense as well, to try and incentivize those uses into the flex service areas rather than in our employment hub.
Just a question. Do we have significant gymnasium usage in the Golden Triangle?
Actually, because this amendment is scheduled for your review in two weeks, we just sent out letters today to all of the businesses that could be impacted by this, and there were 18 within the entire community. Now, probably the ones that would be most impacted would be the Tags building right at West 70th. That's, they're occupying not 100% of the building, but a significant amount of that building as a gymnasium. The Winter Park facility, which is, again, kind of a one-off, not every community has a football training stadium in its, in its community. And then the third one is the Champions Hall up in the Golden Triangle, where there's things like batting cages, laser tag, probably a bunch of other uses there, but that building is an example of 100%. It was allowed under this gymnasium provision of 100%. So currently, the way staff has that amendment drafted, Champions Hall would likely become a non-conforming use, which means that they could continue their business, they can maintain it, they just can't expand it. You know, the Tags or the Winter Park site might be the same. The other properties that received notice, I would expect that our kind of phase two of that project will be, once those property owners start contacting us to try and find out, hey, would this make me non-conforming or not, we'll be able to get a better handle on what are the actual uses in that building in order to determine if they would hit that certain percentage requirement, and also, how were those uses categorized? Because in the industrial district, you can also have 15% of your floor area as a retail use. So in 1995, were they determined to be a gymnasium use or a retail use? Because it hasn't always been consistently applied. So we would expect that, as I said, phase two of this process would be to document for these, you know, 15 to 18 uses, kind of where they're at and how they would fit into whatever amendment gets approved, so that they kind of have a baseline to start with and know how much flexibility they have for additional floor space and other uses.
I guess I, my, my comment on this section is, you know, I agree with getting a definition around gymnasium, but I'm not sure how I feel about kind of limiting the percentage of gymnasium use in the, in the industrial districts. I understand the intent behind it, but, you know, when I think of something like Champions Hall, which I use regularly, the Winter Park property and Tags, those types of uses, which I think every city has, if I'm put plopping a new one down somewhere, I think they tend to go into industrial areas. But then I get the other side of it, is we want the industrial areas to have jobs. But it's just sort of, I don't know how I kind of feel about it, because I think those types of uses can really only afford to go into those industrial and types of situations. So I guess I'm just a little torn on, on that part of it.
And again, if I may, Mr. Chair, circle back on that. Some of these uses are not consistent with what their guiding is in Aspire. So let's take, for instance, Winter Park. You know, the Vikings have vacated that facility. We've got a temporary use going on in there right now. That property's guided for office development in the long term. The Tag site is essentially right on top of the Golden Triangle station. That property's guided for TOD development. You know, and to address Commissioner Mehdi's concern, or comment, I should say, about the fact that there is community need and community support for these uses, you know, there's an opportunity to incentivize allowing those types of uses at a higher or possibly full percentage of a building's area within that flex service area. So there'd still be opportunities for them to locate within the community. It isn't as if, you know, there's this line in the sand, and now we're looking to not accommodate this type of use anymore. So I don't want to steal all the thunder and fun from two weeks from now, but that's kind of just a snapshot of what we're expecting to bring forward. Some of the other miscellaneous, and these are what I was talking about, is amendments that might just get tacked on to other bigger items, is dog kennels are permitted uses in the industrial districts. Some questions we get from kennel providers or inquiring parties quite often is, what about treatment of animals? We're not a vet clinic, so we don't want to be classified as a vet clinic, but can we treat animals if we're, you know, we're keeping your pet there? Can we, you know, trim toenails and do grooming and provide, administer medicine, things of that sort? That's a question we get quite often. If we could address that upfront in the code, I think that would be beneficial to communicate that early and often, if you will. Parking ramps are something that we're hoping to see a bit more of or expecting to see a bit more of as properties develop. In the TOD zoning districts, we do require parking ramps to have a higher building material standard. But currently, we don't have that same requirement in, say, just our standard commercial districts. So in order to kind of level that playing field, staff will be continuing to look at making sure standards are equitable across all zoning districts. Right now, administrative lot splits and combinations are allowed by code. So if a person comes in and they own a, you know, a sizable piece of property, and they can split it into two lots, meet all the standards, we can handle that at an administrative level. But we don't limit the number of parcels that can be combined. So we limit the number that it can result in. It can result in no more than two, but we don't limit the number on the front end. And that's something most communities do, you know, pick a number for conversation's sake. No more than four can be combined and result in two. So again, just kind of a clarifying statement. The intent there is if you've got a whole bunch of parcels that you're looking to combine, you probably should be going through a more in-depth process than an administrative review in order to, to get that approval. Another housekeeping item would be to define public art. We talk a lot in our design guidelines about public art. We talk about it in our PUD section of the code, that we encourage it, but we want to make sure we differentiate that from signage, so that, you know, somebody isn't coming in and proposing what they term as public art, but it really would function as a sign for their businesses, a way of skirting our signed regulations that are in place. And then our residential districts right now have requirements kind of smattered throughout the zoning chapter. So for instance, if I own a property that's zoned R195, there are three different places in our zoning ordinance that I would have to look to understand what all of the regulations are that apply to that. Staff would like to reformat that so that a resident or developer can look in one spot and get all of the information. So not looking to substantively change the information, just relocate it and put it all together where it belongs. But that's a pretty hefty task, and it kind of is a bit daunting when you start looking at the red line version. It looks like we're changing a lot, but we're really, like I said, just moving it around and not changing the substance. So those are the miscellaneous kind of amendments that will be moving forward. Any questions that I can answer at the end? I'm happy to do.
Commissioners, anything?
I have a couple. Back to the gymnasium thing for a minute. When you all look at doing a zoning clarification like that, that might limit potential future use, do you look at the vacancy rate that's existing in that area? I mean, how much of that stuff is leased? Is there a fair amount of vacancy, no vacancy, and how it might impact a property owner that might want to allow something like that to expand?
Mr. Chair members of the Commission, when we do a zoning verification on a property, largely it's just documenting how large is the building, how many tenant bays are there, what types of uses are inhabiting those. Because particularly in the industrial district, where you have those large buildings, you may have six tenants in there. Some of it is industrial uses that are permitted by right. Some of it is maybe a retail use, which is limited to 15% of the floor area of a building. Some of those are office uses. Offices are limited to 50, five zero percent of the floor area. So it's more of a documentation of what uses are there and how are they classified under the current regulations of the code, so that the property owner understands what additional options he or she may have, rather than looking at kind of the market conditions, if you will. That way, they know, hey, I've got, I don't know, 25% of my office requirement left that I could lease out to anybody interested in that type of use. But I also maybe have 10% of retail space left that I could lease out. And it allows them the opportunity to be educated and informed about what the code allows, rather than what sometimes does happen, tenant moves into a building, and they've been there a couple of years, and they come forward and, you know, are looking for a sign or making other improvements, and we find out you guys aren't meeting the use standards that we have for the amount of space that's being regulated out there. So that's kind of more the intent behind the gymnasium zoning verification phase two piece.
Okay. And back on the, the mixed use, where we were talking in the, one of the areas was like around Eden Prairie Mall. And the mixed use, and the way the conversation was going, is related to a, like a per-building use. So if something like the residential that was put in Southdale's parking lot, or something like that, was going to go there, fairly big building, at least by memory, I think it's all residential. I don't think there's any mixed use in the building itself. Obviously, the parcel is mixed use because it's mall. How would that apply?
Mr. Chair members of the Commission, our intent with the mixed use is to address those exact scenarios. So it wouldn't necessarily require that there be mixed use within the building, but right now, knowing that residential uses and office uses, are looking at utilizing some of those parking areas around malls, or maybe even tenant spaces in malls that are vacating. Right now, if a residential developer came forward and said, I'd like to build some units on the Eden Prairie Mall site, our code doesn't allow for that. So the intent of this mixed use would be to allow for that, not necessarily require a bunch of mixes, mix of uses in the building, but within the entire area.
If not, thank you very much, Julie. Very informative, and we'll look forward to the future discussions and votes on, on these. Anything else from a planner's standpoint?
No, sir.
Okay. Any members' reports? Not seeing any? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Gooding moves to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Mehdi. Vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Fine. Opposed. Meeting adjourned.[1757.51]